I called order the regular board meeting for the Park Ridge Niles School District sixty-four for Thursday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Carol, can your call roll, please?
Pearl?
Here.
Riles?
Here.
Sotos? Biagi?
Here.
Salas here, Sanchez?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. The administration's asked us to go into closed session this evening under two C two to discuss collective bargaining matters related to the district, so do I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thanks, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Denise, that was you? Thanks. So Denise has the second, Larry, as a motion. Is there any discussion on going into closed under two C two? Okay, seeing none, then Carol?
Sanchez?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Biagi?
Yes.
Salas, yes, motion carries.
Thanks, Carol. The board is back in open session right now. It is Thursday, March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is the regular board meeting of the Park Ridge Nile School District sixty-four. We were in closed session starting at right around six P M. Under section two C two of the Open Meetings Act to discuss matters pertaining to collective negotiating. So with that, why don't we start with a roll call again, just to see who's out here, and then we can get rolling with our agenda?
Earl?
Here.
Riles?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Sotos? Salas here. Biagi?
Here.
Sanchez?
Here.
Quorum still present.
Great, thank you. Larry, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Larry. I have no opening remarks tonight, so I think we're going to move on to public comments right now. And I will read the statement that we always read into the record, but first off, I want to say that as we have been for, well, we're hitting right at about the year mark now, aren't we? Due to COVID nineteen, it is prudent to have this meeting remotely instead of in person. We are following all guidelines identified by the state, and as a result of being remote, all votes this evening will be taken at a roll call vote rather than voice vote. So each speaker is given three minutes to address the board. Comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools. Each person appearing before the board will be treated with courtesy and respect, and the board requests the same in return. In light of the privacy of personnel and student matters, commenters are strongly discouraged from speaking about individual staff or students during public comment. Commenters are instead encouraged to first raise such concerns privately with the board president or administration. The board, however, recognizes each commenter's First Amendment rights. Thus, it will not prohibit commenters from speaking about individual staff or students subject to well-recognized exceptions under the First Amendment, such as obscenity, threats, fighting words, or incitements to violence. So with that, and it looks like Carol, Tom, Sotos is present now as well, so if we can let the record reflect.
Okay, like seven oh two. Yeah.
Yep. All right, so we're at public comment on non-agenda items right now. Dr. Olson, is there anyone present wishes to address the board on non-agenda?
There is not.
Okay, and Natasha, have we received any emails?
We have not received any emails, no.
Okay, and just as a reminder to the public, as always, the email address that's published on the district's website will get right to us during the meeting, so we can take questions live at various points along the meeting. And again, we would have taken comments right now on non-agenda items, but there are none, so we are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of the meeting agenda. So does any board member have any changes, additions, deletions to the agendas presented this evening? Okay. We are moving quickly. Dr. Olson, we have a staff recognition.
Yes, so as the board has done for each month this year, we have recognized either students or staff in some way and how they've been working for the benefit of students. Tonight, we would like to talk about our instructional teachers. Our instructional teachers work with those special education students who are, have the majority of their day within the special ed program. And I'm going to turn it over to Leanne, and she'll take it from here.
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to let everybody know that I've been extremely proud of our instructional and S L C staff this year. They really outdid themselves. I'm so impressed of the staff and their willingness and desire to be in person this year for our students with the most significant instructional needs. They came in knowing that the spring of two thousand and twenty was very difficult for many of our students and families being in a remote setting. Those students who stayed in a remote setting, staff were creative in finding other ways to reach those students so that they could continue to grow. But we were very thrilled with the staff who could come in person and also the students who could come in person. Our instructional and S L C staff hold each student's learning needs to a high priority and are committed to these students at all levels. And I wanted to thank the instructional and S L C staff for their continued outstanding work, especially this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frost and Dr. Olson, and on behalf of the board as well, we want to extend our appreciation to all of our instructional staff, so thanks to all of you. Dr. Olson, I think you've got a COVID nineteen update for us.
Yes. So we are still set to return for a full in-person for those families that were interested following spring break, which will begin on March twenty-ninth. In terms of the percent of families that have chosen either option, our lowest school has eighty-one percent of students choosing to be in person, and we have two schools that are right at ninety percent. So really, overall, everybody else is somewhere in the eighties. And this really has been more students than we expected. But we are ready to meet them, and we have no concerns in regard to, you know, that many students coming. We are still prepared, and we'll ensure that we don't have any classes where the space between is lower than three feet. In terms of, you know, guidance from the state, we did receive a new document this week called Part Four of the Transition Joint Guidance, and this comes from the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health. And just to realize the significance, the last time these two entities put out something, it was last summer. And what they had put out in Part Three was really the basis for how everything was designed this year in terms of logistics and what guidelines we needed to follow. So with this new document coming out this week, you know, unfortunately, like it has been in the past, we had no warning that this was coming, and then it comes out and we have to quickly start going through it. I think Tony might have called me within a couple of minutes already of it coming out because he had already found a couple of the key points that we needed to start talking through, so it does take a little time for districts to process the information as well as lawyers who are advising those districts just in terms of interpreting and understanding what this new guidance is going to mean. So while there are several pieces, there are three that I just wanted to focus on tonight. The first is the fact that this document now officially puts out the comfort level of moving down to three feet. And that we are now, for students and for vaccinated staff, they can be three feet of each other and still be, still within the comfortable range of what Illinois has set. The second piece, which is more challenging, is that the guidance also said, though, that if you're going to eat, you still have to be six feet apart. So this has caused some changes to what we were planning to do, so the principals are currently working through that. Just due to the amount of students that are coming in with that requirement, it's going to, you know, cause most likely a need for some more supervision and some different arrangements that each of our schools are going to have to make to meet this need. But again, we are confident that we can do so. The last area that, you know, isn't necessarily in the guidance, but it's just something that we're currently faced with is transportation. That with this many students now coming back, we're needing to look at various options for how we run our bus routes. And so Luann and her department has been working for the last several weeks on different scenarios and different options, and we're talking those things still through of trying to make this all work. But those are just a couple of the challenges that we've been dealing with. And then lastly, is that principals are continuing to work with families that following spring break, they were concerned about coming back during those first two weeks because they were worried about what the practices might be of other families or staff during spring break. And those two weeks following, is everybody going to be quarantining like they should and so forth? So for some of our families that wanted to wait the first two weeks until that period is over and then start coming in person, we've been making arrangements for that, and that is a perfectly fine option for families to choose. We are going to try to help tighten up, though, beyond that. It's just that as the years going on, we're starting to find that there are cases where maybe a student wakes up in the morning and just doesn't feel like going, so they're just going to remote in for that day. Or that, you know, sorry, I know this just came up, but we're currently on a road trip, and we're in Tennessee, so, you know, we're going to be remoting in for this part, and then we need to make these arrangements, and teachers are having to kind of deal with that sometimes on a day-to-day basis of who's there and who's not there and how this is working. So we want to keep working with our families to try to tighten up some of those pieces. But overall, we are very excited to welcome, you know, everybody back after spring break. It's been fun to get a lot of emails from parents, excited, thankful, and are just bubbling, but I think also what makes me feel even better is hearing their stories about how excited their kids are. And whether their kids were hybrid and now they get to go all day or a week, or if they were somebody that was remote before and now has the opportunity to be with other kids. So we're very much looking forward to that next step, and those are just a few of the things that we're working through right now.
Great, thank you, Dr. Olson. Any questions from the board on that presentation for Dr. Olson? Okay. All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is the discussion of the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two student fees, and Luann, I believe this one is yours.
Thank you, Rick. So much like we've presented in the last few years, and I think it's about six years ago, Brian, Tom, Sotos, and I sat down and came up with our, our chart and everything and kind of worked out all of our fee information. So we're bringing the same information to the board again this year. We are not asking for any increases in our fees. If you had a chance to look at our spreadsheet of what we are able to charge fees for, most of these items are occurring this year and being purchased, so all of our online subscriptions, all of our materials are being purchased. Supervision that we can charge for is occurring. In fact, that's occurring even more in terms of, you know, having, needing additional supervision when children are eating in their classrooms. So when we looked at the fees this year, we have the student share for elementary or family share at thirty-two percent, the district share at sixty-eight, and our student fees for middle school are at about forty-eight percent and fifty-two this year. Some of the things we're not doing are we're not doing field trips, but that was a very small budget and a small budget for band and orchestra for their field trips that they take. Otherwise, the fees are pretty much occurring this year. So we would like to recommend that we leave our fees the same for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and it'll be the thirteenth year that we have not changed our fees. If you had a chance to look in the back of the packet, there's a memo of information from Val Varhala, our Director of Business Services. I had her update that today in terms of what our outstanding fees are for the two thousand and twenty-one school year. Couple of weeks ago, we sent out reminder letters. This time, it went through the United States Postal Service to families that still had outstanding fees. As of this morning, we have collected one million, thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Our outstanding balance is two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven sixty-one, and that percentage outstanding is about thirteen point, three nine percent. This does cover all of our fees, so this is band, Chromebook, and our student fees, so they're all included within there. As the board knows, we do work with all our families on an individual basis. If a family needs a fee waiver or if they need to set up a payment plan, you know, many times people are not sure how to ask for a fee waiver, and so we do work with them. We have had individuals that were earning more money last year and less this year, and we've been working with them on on getting their fee waivers set up. As you know, we typically use a, look at the tax return from the prior year. However, if you've lost your job, been furloughed or laid off, right, that's not going to be a clear reflection, so we do work with our families on an individual basis so that we don't have anybody having issues trying to pay the student fees. Any questions?
What's the next step after you did the mail or about the fees?
Sure.
And then we don't wait for them to contact us when the fees are delinquent. Do, do we have a step where we go out to the families?
So we did. So typically, we send it through email, Larry, and this was actually sent through the United States Postal Service, this letter. So if people are not reading their email, they are getting this letter in the mail. And after this step, we do turn it, which is what we have done every year, is turn it over to a collection agency. We have pushed this off a few months this year, given COVID. But that is normally what we would do moving forward with the outstanding fees.
Even if they're contacted, though, by a collection agency, they can still come in and ask for a waiver.
That is correct. And so typically, what we do find, Larry, during this time is when we now ask parents, like, okay, we really need you to pay your fees or ask for a waiver. This is sometimes when families that have been nervous about asking for a fee waiver do come forward and talk to us. And we, we work with all of our parents, and it really is on an individual case-by-case basis that we, you know, help them with their fees. And if they can't pay them, we make sure they get their fee waiver in place.
Thank you.
How about if we take a motion on this, and then if we've got more specific questions about the motion, we can talk about it at that point?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approved the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two student fees as presented.
Second.
Thanks, Fred. Had the motion, Larry. You had the second. I, Luann, could you just explain, you know, for me and for the public, I guess, to and for the board? So I know we're, we're proud of the fact that the fees haven't gone up in thirteen years, that we've kept them, you know, steady at thirteen years. But I presume that, you know, our costs, while I'm not even going to presume, I know our costs have gone up, you know, with at least the cost of living, if not inflation and everything else, over the past thirteen years. So can you explain the logic? And I don't mean that in a negative way, just mean how your team analyzes that and how you come to the conclusion that despite increased costs and everything else, that it does not make sense to, to raise those fees?
Sure, thank you. So first of all, in years past, we have raised fees for the athletics. I believe not last year, but the two prior years, we increased the fee both years. So what we typically do is we start looking at things, especially things where it might not involve all students. So it's a select group of students, and we're looking at kind of what those costs are. When we see those costs starting to severely exceed the amount we're collecting for a fee, then we look for adjusting that. But when we look to adjust those, we also look at neighboring districts. So what, I know our regular fee is higher than other districts, but when we're looking at specific fees, we're looking at what are our neighboring districts charging for sports and things like that. In terms of the regular student fees, this year, we are recommending no increase because of COVID, just like we did last year. At some point, what the board needs to look at is how much of a share, the student share, how much of that is decreasing and how much of the district's amount is increasing. So it really needs to be where the board is comfortable with that. When I came to the district six years ago, there was a lot of tension and upset and turmoil about student fees and what we were charging and what they were, you know, what, what those fees actually covered, and so we had done a lot of research and put this together. So it really is at the point when the board decides, you know what, we probably want to look at, do we want to increase our fees this year? For the last two years, we've not asked for an increase because of COVID.
Yep. So and that was sort of what I was getting to was, it's, I'm not aware that there's a board policy in place that says that fees should be, you know, X percent of cost of this or that or the other thing. And my, my point is, at some point, maybe the next board should consider that because one way or the other, your, the cost operate, the district are going up, and if the fees are staying steady, you know, we're not tracking with whatever normal cost of living and inflationary increases are taking place to the district.
Well, Rick, if I, if I could just jump in, another, and correct me if I'm wrong, Luann, but another element was typically, most districts will charge, will pass along the entire cost of the fees to their residents. However, they also, there's also a tax base that's, you know, a little different in difference, in different surrounding neighborhoods. So when, when I got on and this fee was a huge issue, one of the main concerns was that the, the community didn't know exactly what it covered. It was very vague and general. You know, it covers this, it covers this, it covers this. That's when Luann jumped in, and I, you know, I helped her a little bit, but she did the bulk of the work. She's being very kind when she says I was involved. I was involved in the, in the sense that I wanted, I wanted it done, but she did a lot of work on breaking it down to exactly every dollar where it goes. And every category is a category that, that this, that we as a district are allowed to charge as fees and not in the, not lumped into the, the numbers where it gets paid for through our, our taxes. The number then became, then we saw what that number was. And when we made a determination at the time on how much of that to pass along to the, to the, to the parents, a lot of that also had to do with the number itself, and we looked around to surrounding districts and what they were charging for fees. And we want it to be, you know, in that same ballpark world. And that's how we came up with how much we were going to pass along and how much we weren't. But now, as time has gone by and costs have gone up, the percentage of what we pay and the percentage of what the individual parents pay has now kind of shifted, and we just have to decide, like you said, as a board, do we want to, if, if the budget allows for us to keep the, the fees where they're at, which inevitably has the percentages of how much we pay compared to what they pay, start becoming very unbalanced. It all, I think it all, it all depends on our budget and whether we can afford to continue to keep doing it that way.
That's exactly right, Tom, and I would, that's a very good point, is that as a district, we haven't really needed to increase the fees to cover our, you know, our costs, and so we've tried to, you know, hold them where they are. And it could be something that the board looks at going forward, like, do they want to pick up? Do they want the parents to pick up, you know, say forty percent of the fee? So if there was a certain percentage, then that fee would fluctuate more year to year, depending on where our expenditures are. But some years, remember, for some of the things that we charge for, so like some of our online services or textbook adoptions and that, they don't happen every year. So one year, the percentage, you know, it can change, but it could be just based on what type of adoptions we're doing that year, or are we paying for a five-year subscription that year?
So Luann, I'm, I'm not proposing, you know, I'm voting in favor of what you're recommending tonight, and I'm, I'm I'm not suggesting anything otherwise, but I'm interested in your thoughts on, do you think this is something that maybe the policy committee should discuss for future? And again, this is going to go into the next board at this point. There's no way this will be in place over the next few weeks here. But for the next board to consider whether they do want to put some sort of policy working with your office to come up with a plan that might set percentages, or do you think it makes more sense to leave it more fluid and have a recommendation from you or the future C S B O, you know, you know, on an ad hoc basis?
The thing, well, I think, based on what I just said, that would make me think that we should just leave it more fluid, Rick, as I think about it, because the cost from year to year can vary depending on the adoptions that we're doing. So one year, you know, this percentage could be much higher, and so I think it's really looking at where are we as a whole, as a district? Because if we start kind of going in the opposite direction, then do need to look for the parents to pick up more of the, the fee. Right, because right now, as I said, the district's picking up sixty-eight percent, so that's taxpayers, and the student or parent share is about thirty-two percent. Now, they are taxpayers also. But it is interesting, when I explain to somebody the breakdown of our fees, as soon as I show them what the breakdown is, they have no problem. When I show them, like, well, sixty-eight percent is being picked up by all the taxpayers, and you're only picking up thirty-two percent.
Yep. And I think also, you know, listening to what Tom said, obviously, the district did its due diligence a number of years ago of really setting what that was going to be. And now, the last couple of years, we've kind of been on a pause because of COVID. But I think, Rick, to your point, you know, whether it's next year or something, I think it's time for the district to look at it again and go through maybe that same process that we did several years ago to see where we're at.
And now that we have a few years of data, so we have five or six years of data now, we could look at what those percentages were each year and see, you know, are we going like this, or are we only going like this? And, and make a recommendation based on that also.
And we also have to see what is happening with kindergarten, too, in the future, because that could affect the analysis.
Right.
That's exactly correct, Carol, because if they now start going for a full day, then you're going to have a lot more costs associated with that, more supervision, things like that, so it would adjust that fee.
All right, any other questions for Luann on this issue?
I just want, Luann, if you can remind everyone, or maybe, maybe just me, how we're paying for some of the sustainability initiatives in school, like the composting, is that rolled into the fee? Is that picked up by the, by the company?
So actually, the, our garbage hauler, and I mean, it's Lake Shore, I always mix it up with the bus company, Lakeview. Lake Shore is still paying for that composting fee, which is over a thousand dollars a month, that they are basically donating to the district by picking up all our composts for us. Now, what we did when we did the lunch program is trying to make it self-sustaining, is that's why the lunch price is higher, because we do pay for compostable trays, you know, all of those compostable bags. So we are paying for those items in addition, and so that's why our price is a little higher than maybe another district. But when we had surveyed the parents, they, they wanted us to do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Natasha, were there any emails that have come in from the public on this?
I do have an email, but it's a non-agenda item comment, which came in quite late. So I think if Dr. Olson wants to address that later by email response, that would be good.
Okay, yeah, a non-agenda item, yeah, we'll, we'll pass that to Dr. Olson, but nothing on this topic?
Nothing on this topic.
Okay, great. And Dr. Olson, anyone public present?
There is that.
Okay, great. Well, then I think we will take a roll call vote.
Okay, so we had Sanchez made the motion, right, and Riles seconded.
That's correct.
Okay. Biagi?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Pearl?
Yes.
Salas, yes, Sanchez?
Yes.
Riles?
Yes.
Sotos? Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, Luann, oh. Just delayed. Nice. All right, Luann, you, you've got several more agenda items tonight, so you can't, can't go away too soon here.
All right.
So we're going to move on to the transportation services contract, our next, next item.
Okay, so this is going to be a little harder than the fees, I think. Let me just go down here. So the bus company has come and asked for a seven point four percent increase this year in our transportation costs. If you remember, last spring, we did give the transportation company some percentage give the transportation company some percentage of the money we were receiving back from the state for special education. Is if you, this is a hard one. If you look at the chart that I put together, you can kind of see where we are in terms of our single routes. So right now, we're at a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy cents. And some of the other districts which have gone out to bid recently, costs are considerably higher than our costs. If we move forward with a seven point four percent increase, we're looking at a hundred and forty-seven eighty-eight for a single round trip of the bus. Our special ed goes up slightly less, and that's because special ed runs pretty much throughout the entire year with our transportation. I mean, it has been a hard year on the bus company. And our increase have not been nearly as large as other districts have seen in terms of the increases when they go out to bid, or in terms of increases that their bus company is is offering them. But there are some districts where the bus company has told them to go out to bid. The bus company comes back and increases their cost by twenty percent.
If I could just add to the, in addition to what she's saying, them getting cut hit pretty hard. And I've been dealing with this now for weeks and weeks. The other issue is going on is there's a real scarcity in bus drivers.
Right.
They're not able to hire anybody. So what all these companies are having to do and schools are doing the same is they're raising all of their pay rates and benefits, which then obviously they're trying to pass on to the clients.
So when we were looking at, as Eric said, we're working on our transportation for March twenty-nine, you know, even trying to say, well, could we have additional drivers and use more buses, pay for more routes? They don't have additional drivers. Then we looked at, well, maybe we could get a second company to come in and help. Well, they don't have additional drivers. So it, I don't understand what's causing such a severe shortage of bus drivers. I know I personally couldn't do it. But there is a severe shortage of drivers out there. So that is driving up a lot of this cost in terms of transportation.
Okay, so Luanne, we don't have an action item for this tonight. So this is, you're looking for board consensus on what to go back to the transportation company with?
Right. So we you we kind of have two options. One is to take this increase, or the other option is to go out to bid.
Well, there's a third, which is offer something between go out to bid and the seven percent increase.
Yeah. I've been working with them. This would have been on the bu- the agenda last month, but I've been working with them for a couple of months looking at this.
Yeah, and I think also the intent tonight was if there are any particular areas that the board wants more information on or wants us to investigate before they make a decision, then we can certainly do that as well.
But if if the board is leaning toward they want to go out to bid, we kind of need to know that or get a feeling, because I would want to get the documents out on the street before, you know, the April eighth board meeting.
Any, anybody want to start with their thoughts on this?
So Luanne, if I could just understand the the table that's on there with the route cost, the round trip route cost, is that just, is that for special education students? Is that for all of our students?
This is for the regular ed. The special ed rates are about twenty cents cheaper per route. And that's because we do E S Y in the summer also.
Okay. So these are the regular rates that we pay compared to what other districts pay. Okay, thank you.
And the guy in District sixty-three, that my cohort over there, he goes, oh, my God, I'm paying so much.
Well, so I want to ask a question about that, because how how do you compare apples to apples? Or are you comparing apples to apples? Because wouldn't I I mean, I assume there's a lot of factors that go into how a a bus company sets the prices for a particular district. One might be how far the bus company is from, you know, the district. If the bus company, you know, if the buses are in Kankakee and they have to drive up every day to, you know, whatever, Displanes, that's going to cost more than if the bus company was in Morton Grove. Or if Displanes's routes are twice as large as our route. So they have fewer routes, but they're bigger. So the buses are traveling longer distances. I assume that would impact price. More stops, what, you know, whatever it is. So how how, and I'm not saying you're not comparing apples to apples, I'm just saying, how can you, is it that even possible to say, oh, that district's paying this, that's an equivalent comparison to what we're paying?
So I would say District sixty-three would be probably a close comparison, or District sixty-two, because we're all on the same geographic area. You know, in terms of driving students, it's not like we're out in Barrington where it's a forty-one square mile radius that those buses are traveling.
And are those three different bus companies, Luanne, the of those numbers?
District sixty-three has First Student and Twenty-One, I can't remember, they might also have First Student.
Okay.
But a lot of this is driven by if they've had to go out to bid.
Right.
You know, so a lot of it is driven by it. I mean, I don't like ever being put in this position.
Well, that was my next comment, was I feel like we're all, we've been having this conversation since day one, where we're scared of going out to bid and we're, so we feel that we have a gun to our head to accept whatever contract the bus company gives us, and there's just no room to negotiate, because they'll skedaddle on us if if we say no.
Correct. More than likely, if we go out to bid, because last time we bid, Lakeview was actually the only company that bid.
Right.
And when I cook called people I know, because I've worked with these other bus companies, Cook, Illinois, and First Student, it was, we don't have the drivers. So and a lot of times, the other thing that will happen, one of the companies I took, talked to, I think it was Cook, Illinois, they told me I would have to rent a place for them to park the buses. And I think the district years ago used to rent space at the mall in Niles there. Why can't I, I can't think of the name of it?
Gulf Mill.
Gulf Mill, yes. They used to rent spaces there and keep the buses, because typically you don't want your buses too far away from the schools because of weather. So we want to make sure if your bus is supposed to be there at seven-thirty, that it's there at seven-thirty and not caught on two ninety-four in traffic.
So I guess I'll go back to what Luanne said earlier and then see where the board is on this. So, you know, she presented two options. I presented kind of a half option as well. So either accept the contract as presented from Lakeview, reject it and go out to bid, or I guess counter, you know, wi- with something other than what they've proposed. So why don't we, why don't we go around the horn? I'll start this time. I'll start with Larry's at the top of my screen. So what do you think, Larry?
Well, Luanne, it's the seven percent. What does that come to in dollars?
So per route, we're at, I'm just going to use three million dollars, just as a round number. So you're about, looking at about two hundred and ten thousand, if it's three million, two hundred and ten thousand dollar increase. And our transportation is right around three million, a little over. This year will probably be less, but it's about a two hundred and ten thousand dollar increase.
All through the COVID pandemic, we've been paying the bus company, right?
No.
No?
No. So anytime they didn't drive, we didn't pay them.
Yeah, I remember that vote. So the performance for the last, since we've had the contract form, form, everything I know and hear, their performance has been pretty good, hasn't it?
Yes, their performance is very good, especially and Leanne can attest to this with our special ed students. So one of the owners of the company, Dawn Johnson, actually gives the parents her cell phone number. So if Leanne calls her at two in the morning, Dawn picks up the phone. She has parents, because if we have children that maybe have a bad evening or something, they will call Dawn and let her know that, you know, the child had a bad evening, they're not going to go to school tomorrow or something, you know, of that nature, especially when we're picking children up at their home, it's great if we know ahead of time if they're not going. So I I think I like working with a small bus company, because I know the, you know, I work with the owners. So if there's an issue, I go right to the owners.
I might do that's okay with the increase?
Yes, we can accept this increase.
Just to piggyback, sorry, go ahead.
In my opinion, I'm 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 good with the with the seven percent increase.
Just to piggyback on what Luanne said, they are very responsive, immediately responsive, even when we're some of our private facilities, when they've gone to remote ed, you know, a a split second, I will email Dawn and Dawn will email me back, or we text back and forth. So we have very good communication with with this company.
Denise, what's your thoughts?
Um, you know, similar to Larry, I have not heard any complaints about the buses, and I think that's a big thing for our district. And it seems like even though seven percent sounds like a big increase, it, we are still paying less than other districts. It looks like sixty-two, as I checked it out, uses for student as well. And so I think what Tony said, we're having, they're having to pay the drivers more, so I'm okay with that. The increase they're proposing.
Tom? What's your thoughts?
I I I'm torn, because I like the bus company. And I think, you know, I've been I've been around enough, long enough to know that they're they're not, a good bus company is really not that easy to find. And one that's reliable and one that is easy to, you know, get in contact with. So and I also know how hard it is to go out and bid for them and and where the numbers sometimes come back at, and they're all over the board. So I, you know, I'm okay with the seven percent increase for those reasons. I I just don't like the seven percent increase with, you know, what we've had to be doing, you know, what we've dealt with over the last year and, you know, them getting, you know, pay a few bucks to not really do much for us. But I guess, you know, I'm okay with it.
Carol, your thoughts?
I'm I'm fine with this increase. It's just one year. And just to keep things running smoothly, because a lot of things are changing with logistics and all that stuff with COVID. I do remember, though, when we first started with this company, there were some glitches, but you know, that was normal, because it was a new company. So if we were to switch, then we would have to deal with that on top of all of the other issues. So just for consistency and just for the, you know, this one year extension, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Rebecca?
Yeah, I agree with what everyone else said. I'm okay with this increase. And I think especially for special ed students, since we do a fair amount of busing, the fact that that has gone smoothly, I'm inclined to keep it the way we have it.
Fred?
I agree with what everyone else has said, and I think I just have a feeling going out the bed would come back and bite us.
Yeah, I'm I'm with everyone else in this as well, too. I I just, I struggle with the seven percent, because I feel like we're being taken advantage of. I feel like they could, they could have said ten percent, they could have said twelve percent, and we would be having the same conversation right now. Maybe shame on them for not asking for more. And maybe that's a good thing, but it it's certainly a lot higher than cost of living and and what, you know, what we would presume would have been their increased costs. I understand the increased cost, because they they're having a hard time finding talent to drive. That's a different story. But I also don't want to have to go out to bid. I know the, you know, what, where we're at with that. So. All right. So I think you guys, so Luanne, you're in, I guess, just bringing them, while actually bringing the board back the contract then the next time, right, for execution?
Yes, there'll be one for special ed and one for regular transportation. So we'll bring both of those motions back.
Okay, so you're, and in terms of timing, you're good with just pushing that to the next board meeting? Not that we can vote on it tonight, but it's, we don't have to have a special meeting to bring that to the board.
No, I mean, we could bring it on. I I think the April eighth is fine. April eighth, right, Natasha?
Yep.
Yeah, we're fine.
Good, good. All right. Thank you for all the work on that.
Thank you.
All right, and you have one more. Along with MJ, I think, on the the next discussion, so.
I'm going to let MJ do the talking.
All right. Give Luanne a break for a little bit.
Well, good evening, board members. Um, and again, thank you for your consideration tonight regarding two E-Rate Category Two projects that are related to maintaining and improving the district's network infrastructure. Both of these projects presented to you tonight have been put through the E-Rate process, and we're bringing them before you as our district's recommendations. So the first E-Rate Category Two project is to increase the district's capability to monitor and troubleshoot the wireless infrastructure with the acquisition of what's called network sensors. These sensors provide visibility into a a problem or an issue that might be occurring on the network. So it can be addressed with increased efficiency and effectiveness. These sensors gather data of our physical environment and provide it in a central location so that tech staff can analyze it on a more regular basis. So having this level of insight into our network will help us make it, definitely make it more reliable. And as we are continually dependent on our wireless infrastructure, the this is a key element in our operations. So as I explained in the memo, our network team tested out two different brands of sensors, the Y-Bot sensor system and the Cape sensor system, and ended up being way more pleased with the way the Y-Bot sensor system performed, as well as the kind of data that was gathered by the system, really helped them be able to analyze and help mitigate some issues that we were having. So in going through the E-Rate bidding process, we discovered that Y-Bot sells directly to its customers. And since this is an out, an eratable product, Y-Bot will sell us the product outright with the E-Rate discount. So we aren't having to wait for the reimbursement. So the district, um, tonight, we're bringing to you for approval, the the Y-Bot quote. So for the second E-Rate Category Two project, the district's bringing before you an Emerson middle school wiring upgrade project. So over the course of the past twenty years, modern wireless access points have evolved and are now able to deliver internet speeds that far exceed what our current wiring infrastructure at Emerson can support. So in other words, the wiring structure at Emerson itself is the bottleneck for those internet, for that internet service. So over the course of the past several years, the updated Cat Six wiring has been installed for these modern access points in various areas of the district where construction projects were completed. So we have been, you know, taking advantage of when we needed to do construction in certain spots to make sure that we're improving and upgrading the wire, the wiring in those areas. So in going through the E-Rate process for this project, this will allow the district to capitalize on a forty percent reimbursement for Category Two federal funding. There are, there were times when we had upgraded the wiring through construction, but that wasn't done through E-Rates. So this is a particular project that we're proposing to be done through E-Rates with E-Rate funds. So now, i- in conjunction with that, the upgrade in the wireless infrastructure will help prepare Emerson for a future P A system upgrade, whenever that's going to be scheduled. Emerson's the final school to receive a P A system upgrade in the district, as all all the other schools have had their P A systems upgraded as part of the vestibule projects or the office remodels. The upgraded Cat Six wiring at Emerson will then be the backbone for its Wi-Fi network, while the existing Cat Five E network that's there can be repurposed for the new P A system. So we're kind of trying to try and trying to make our money stretch. So, um, so as members of this USEPTA consortium through E-Rates, the district's guaranteed discounts on orders of any size for Category Two type projects. And in this instance, lowest pricing available for wiring, infrastructure, materials and installation. C D W G was specifically chosen, since C D W has done wiring installations in the district as well, as well as other past projects, and is a trusted and reputable. as well, as well as other past projects, um, and is a trusted and reputable vendor, um, that's done excellent work for us in the past. The other approved wiring vendors were, uh, unknowns to the district, so. So in summary, um, the district is recommending that the Board of Education approve, uh, the following. One, the purchase of the Y-Bot sensors, um, for fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, which includes that E-Rate discount, um, and to approve the Emerson wiring upgrade project to be done by CDWG in the amount of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one.
Great, and, and MJ, just to confirm that, so the, the second motion that we're going to be making, so we're, we have to pay CDWG the full price, and then we're getting the rebate from the government, from the feds, uh, as a result. But in the first bid for the Y-Bot equipment, they're, they're extending the, the discount right off the bat. So we're not having to pay the, the larger number and get the rebate.
Right, right.
Okay.
And they're, they're gonna do the, the paperwork and the hustling with the feds to get that, that.
Right, right. All right, so we have two motions to make, so does anyone want to take the first one, the Y-Bot, uh, motion first, and we'll do the, the next?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, approve the additional network monitoring equipment in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars to Y-Bot.
Thanks. Rebecca, you have the second, great, Denise had the motion, Rebecca the second. Uh, any discussion, any further discussion from the board or questions for MJ?
So, you know, MJ, this might be an ignorant question, but I see with the Y-Bot, there is included a three-year subscription. And then, so what does that entail? And then we have to do more subscriptions after that. I'm, I'm just need some clarity on that.
Yeah, so, um, part of the Y-Bot system is a cloud storage and gathering, um, in a central place of the data that's being, um, sensed by the sensors. So that's the three-year subscription part, um, as well as, uh, you know, hardware updates and, uh, software updates through that three-year process. So it's sort of like a maintenance fee.
So I guess my second part of that question, year four comes around. Do we have to pay another maintenance fee, year four, five, and what is the amount? Like, how much of that is a, a subscription cost per year? I'm just wondering what the long-term cost on this is, just because we just have the first three years.
Sure, um, I, we, we would have to find out, but, uh, I do, in terms of like a percentage of what the hardware is and the subscription is.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to think, you know, as we, you know, you always want to know, like, what's the long term? So this is three years, but then after that, is it a thousand bucks a year? I don't know, I mean, I'm just making that up.
Um, that I would have to find out. I'm presuming it's another three-year subscription with the, with the current uh, hardware, so.
And MJ, we're guessing that that should be much lower than the fifteen thousand, because we're not buying hardware then.
Right, right, sorry, yes, yeah.
But I guess, to, just to piggyback on what Denise was saying, the, the concern, I guess, maybe what you're suggesting Denise is that it could be, you know, the sort of the old cellphone world situation where you get this, you get the piece of equipment for basically free, and it's fifteen grand for a three-year contract, and in three years, we're gonna get another fifteen thousand dollar bill.
It's gonna go up seven point four percent.
No, that's transportation, Fred, sorry.
But you're okay with that, right Fred? I mean.
Yeah, you're good with that.
That, that is a really good question. I will have to, uh, we would have to ask that question to Y-Bot. I'm not sure what portion of it was hardware and what portion of it was, um, the actual subscription. But I would imagine that the subscription, if it's straight, like the software part or even updates and maintenance, it would be less than fifteen, three sixty.
So.
I'm sorry.
Oh, so I was just gonna ask MJ, so do you, are we in a position where we can punt on this for the night, so you could get an answer to that question? We can bring thi- this particular one back to the board at the next meeting? Or do you need to do this tonight in order to?
Take advantage of E-Rate, because, yeah, process. I would, I would say we, we would need to move on it, um, just because we're hitting E-Rate deadlines as well. But. We could bring it back, I guess, on April first, if you would rather have the answer to that question.
Well, with those deadlines, we have part two on April first, right? I mean, don't we?
We do, right.
Can I ask how long you expect this piece of equipment to last? Is this gonna be outdated in three years and we're gonna be looking at something else?
I, I'm, I'm thinking it's not gonna be outdated in three years, because it's generally doing, um, a process, it's sort of an internal process, uh, and monitoring our network internally. So I, I don't anticipate it being something that we would need to update in three years. Um, we're hoping to get at least five, if not six, so two, but I don't, I, I'd have to have our network manager really speak to the details of that.
So MJ, I guess I'm wondering two things. One is regardless, if the board's gonna go ahead and vote tonight, I still think we should give them that information. Um, if the board would like, it sounds like though, that if the board would like to hold off until they have the information, April first is still acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. And also so that the board knows, you know, over the last decade, this is kind of where education has moved. A lot of our curriculum companies now only give us so many years' subscription, and then you need to renew, a lot of our testing is like this. Really, education has become this kind of model for a lot of products and programs where you need to utilize them continually over time.
So, with the board, I mean, if, if, it sounds like April one would not put us in a, in a pickle with regard to this. Would the board prefer to get that information and then vote on it officially at that meeting? Or are people prepared to vote now?
I mean, procedurally, we have a pending motion, right Denise made it.
Right.
See if Denise wants to withdraw, I don't know.
Right, well, and that's why I'm asking right now. If, if we want to withdraw this, we can, but I, I, I'd just like to get a sense from the board. Otherwise, we do an up or down vote, but that seems kind of silly. I, you know, if we can rescind it, if, if everyone wants to push to April one. Denise, you, you brought up the issue first, I think, what, what do you think? Wait till April one and get that.
Yeah, I, 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 sorry, I didn't think of this ahead of time, you know, to ask the question. But, you know, I just, I just wonder, I just think we should go into it, just knowing that. I see from their website, they offer right now one, three, or five-year subscriptions. So is it beneficial for us to do a five-year subscription? Is it cheaper, you know, so I guess, I guess I feel like there maybe is a little more information that might be helpful, so.
I agree with you, and I think, I mean, who knows? Again, if, if you, if my crazy situat- the cellphone situation comes over, the, you know, the old razor situation comes to fruition, it could be that the other product is significantly cheaper in the long run, over a six-year, ten-year ROI. So I'm, I'm with you. Anybody else have strong feelings one way or the other? All right, then, I'm gonna make an executive decision to, to push this one. So Denise, will you be willing to, well, actually, wait, uh, Rebecca, you seconded it. So would you be willing to rescind your second?
Sure.
And Denise, would you be willing to rescind your motion?
Yes, I will.
Okay, great, so we'll push that one to April one. All right, so we have another motion, same topic, but for the wiring for Emerson.
Well, I had to rescind my motion, so I'm not gonna do a motion right now.
She's got hurt feelings as a result of having to rescind her motion, right? She doesn't want to do another one.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approved the Emerson Middle School Wiring Upgrade in the amount of fifty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars to CDWG.
Thanks Fred, is our second?
Second.
Oh, Denise comes in with the second. Great, all right, so Denise had the second, Fred had the motion. Um, any discussion on this or any other questions for MJ on this one?
So MJ, can you give me a sense as to what the other, I got prices from some of the other vendors were? I know you said we didn't have any experience with them, but I'm just curious how they compare to, um, what we're presented with tonight.
Um, sorry Fred, my internet was going in and out, um, could you repeat?
Sure, I just was curious, what did the other vendors, what prices did they come at? I'm just trying to compare what you presented with us tonight with what maybe some of the other vendors came. And I know you said we didn't have experience with them.
Um, well, so we had worked through the consortium, and, um, I don't have the pricing from the other group, but, uh, these were the four bidders in the consortium, uh, for, for the area of wiring that were deemed like the lowest bids, um, you know, as, as, as we grouped all of the wiring projects together. These were the four that were deemed the lowest bids.
Okay.
Um, and so we chose CDW because, um, of our existing relationship with them.
And do we know if any other schools had done business with the other vendors? Or we're just, we're just comfortable, given that we've done work with them?
Yeah, we're just, we're just comfortable.
So MJ, am I to presume then, from what you said, that the, there was no significant difference in the bid from the other three to CDWG?
Right, exactly. And in fact, CDWG was graded, um, uh, higher in the lower, lowest pricing. So they, they all got rated and, um, CDW was the, um, highest rated in terms of like the pricing that we got, so.
But MJ, am I understanding that it's almost like the consortium is doing it for you, and then they're coming and saying, here are the four lowest bids, pick among these four companies, and then, then you had your reasons why you, is that what I'm understanding?
Right, right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? No one wants to rescind, right, this time? Just checking. Okay, um, Natasha, anything from the public, uh, an email on this issue?
Nothing.
Okay, and Dr. Olson, anything?
No.
Okay. All right, take a roll call.
Yeah, G.
No.
Pearl?
Yes.
Riles?
No.
Dallas, yes, Little?
Yes.
Sotos?
Yes.
Sanchez?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to the staffing plan, and I think Dr. Martin, this one's yours.
Yeah, good evening to everybody. Um, tonight, we're gonna be talking or asking for the board to approve our staffing plan. And I'm gonna preface it by saying, there isn't a whole much, bunch to our staffing plan at this moment, as we're still trying to figure out what the twenty-one, twenty-two school year is gonna look like, particularly with our staffing makeup. Um, but I'll do a quick little rundown of the fact that where we're at right now is, this school year, we're down roughly a hundred and eighty students from our projection, as we talked about at the last meeting. This had to do primarily with students unenrolling, um, and going to private schools or other places when we opened up in a remote and hybrid setting. Based on the fact that we don't believe that our projection models will be accurate at the moment, because we just don't know what the next couple of months will bring for us, our team decided to do a simple rollover method where we take the kids that we know, assuming with a pretty much accuracy, that if they're here now, they're gonna be here in the fall. But when we do a simple roll-up, we're still going down students. So we have, the roll-up model has us going down a hundred and eight students. So that means we'll go down sections and we would lose teachers. Now, we're, we seem to be in an okay spot at this particular point, uh, due to some teachers leaving, uh, due to, um, retirements. So at the moment, I don't think we're gonna need to riff any teachers or reduction in force, uh, but we continue to look through and work with that, and I'll be meeting with our union and going over all of that, um, in greater detail. Uh, so right now, where we would typically be coming to the board and saying, hey, we're looking for authorization for X number of teachers, and there's, you know, four or five bubble sections at this building or across the district. We don't have that right now. Uh, we are gonna sit back for the moment and wait to see, work on a, a simple enrollment model, and if things start to change based on, you know, changes in the world, or our enrollment starts to tick up, then we're gonna come back to the board and talk about adding teachers at that time. But we're not gonna try to predict what that's going to look like. So the one thing that we are asking the board for approval tonight on is for the board to continue our two-point-five K-five differentiation coaches that were set to expire at the end of this school year. If you recall, they were approved on a two-year rollout or a two-year plan. Uh, their primary job for these people, uh, were to support our K-five teachers in the area of ELA, specifically pushing in modeling, job embedded coaching, professional development for our staff. Um, and we thought this was the best way to really get the, the best bang for our buck and the best, um, training for our staff. But unfortunately, this last year, along with so many other things, the plans just haven't worked out. We've had to pull these teachers to support in other areas where we were short-staffed. The ability to obviously push into classrooms, model for teachers, work in the small group, just hasn't been able to materialize in our certain, in our, uh, our current setup. But we're hopeful that, um, our staff, our two-point-five differation, differentiation coaches, who did such a great job in the first year, that the board will allow us to keep them for one more year, so that when we have this in-person model that we're hopeful for in the fall, that they can continue the work and finish up the goals they had set with teachers. And then we would sunset these two-point-five positions at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So again, these are not new positions, they're just asking for a continuation for one more year. And again, that's due to the changes, uh, in the, uh, the pen- pandemic has caused for us. So that's a little bit of a synopsis and a, a summary of what we went through, um, at the previous board meeting. I'll take any questions anybody might have before, uh, we move forward.
Looks like you may not have any, Joel, why don't we take the motion and then we can, we can open it up for everybody at that point? Or not?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District sixty-four, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approved the recommended twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two staffing plan presented and discussed at the February eleventh, twenty-twenty-one Regular Board of Education meeting.
Thanks Fred, is there a second? I think Tom got you that time, Rebecca, I hear. All right, Tom's got the second, Fred's got the motion. I've got a question for you, Joel, not necessarily on what you're asking us to, to per se approve as part of it, but question about the data in here. So Washington is got the most significant delta, negative delta on your chart. And not to pour salt in an open wound, but, um, the McGibben report several years ago said that Washington was going in the other direction, and that was the justification for spending five million dollars to build onto the school. And now we've got the largest decrease in the district at Washington. So where, where do we go wrong with the numbers?
I don't think we went wrong with the numbers. I think we saw substantial unenrollment at some of the grade levels due to the pandemic. I also think that what we've seen is that fifth grade class that is currently going out and the one, those were gigantic classes, um, bigger than normal. And I think, you know, those are just, that fifth grade class regardless is so big that we're gonna see a drop to some degree. But as I've met with, uh, the Washington administration, the honest truth is, it isn't gonna take a whole lot to push that number back up and push those sections back up to where we are. Again, I, we have talked at the different scenarios, and, you know, depending on kind of what happens over the summer, what happens with, um, people's comfort levels with vaccinations. Again, I think a lot of these numbers could change very quickly. And one of the things that, uh, Angie Britto, the principal, and Janet Van Arsdale, the assistant principal, and I talked through is, when you look at the actual kids at the grade levels, it isn't gonna take a lot to push these numbers back up to the present levels, uh, meaning back up to where they were this past school year. And so I think it's, I think if the pandemic had not occurred, we would be looking at maybe a slight decrease as that fifth grade went out, but nothing that would have a substantial impact on sections or the amount of money the board has spent, uh, for the additions. I still think that space, um, will be a premium at Washington, and I think the additions are something that people will continue to be thankful for as we move forward.
Did we lose more at Washington pandemic-related to, to St. Mary's seat because of its proximity to Mary's seat? You know, that, that side of town where the Washington kids go?
You know, I, I can't say that for a hundred, or with a hundred percent, um, you know, honesty on, I just don't know where all the kids went. Um, I think you. I think you could make some assumptions that based on some of the schools' proximities, that it's obviously easier for some parents to choose those locations. But I, you know, I don't have that data in front of me.
Okay, just curious. Any other questions for Joel on the report and the recommendation?
Quick question. Joel, are we not going to know really until the late summer? What, how many of these kids of these, you know, 180 are going to be coming back to us? Like, is it going to be a game time decision?
No, I, I'd love to sit here and tell you that, boy, you know, I think things are going to change. And, you know, as we typically have by June, we're going to have a really good idea. But I think this is going to be one of those years like last year to some degree, where enrollment throughout the summer is going to change a lot. And I, you know, I, I say this, I answer that question saying that with even some uncertain certainty in that because I think everything right now is so volatile and changing so much that I think the only certainty right now is that things are going to be uncertain all the way up to the start of the next school year, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does.
Are any students coming back after spring break since we'll be five days a week?
Do you mean kids who are not enrolled in the district?
Right, kids who went to other schools or have any of them indicated that they're coming back?
I have not seen or heard of that. I'll ask Luanne or maybe Eric if they have that information. But I have not, in conversations that I have had with the principals, that has not come up.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a report in front of me. I'd have to look at it, but I, I haven't heard of that either. I would imagine it is possible in a couple of cases, but we could find that out and let you know if you want.
Any other questions for Dr. Martin? All right, Natasha, any comments from the public on this one?
None.
And Dr. Olson, anyone in person?
No.
Okay, take the vote.
Ellis, yes, Sotos.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Yagi.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Riles.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. And thanks Joel for the report.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the approval of the 2020 to 23 superintendent's employment contract. So for the benefit of the public, I want to give a little bit of background on this and how we got to where we are this evening and, and what we're voting on. So per the terms of Dr. Olson's contract, we conducted, the board conducted his performance review back in September. Trying to remember, I think it was July, Dr. Olson, somewhere in that timeframe last year. And because of some issues related to the pandemic and the inability to, to finish some of the goals that the board had set for Dr. Olson. We decided to relook at those goals in the January, February timeframe. And at that time, discuss the extension of Dr. Olson's contract. Normally, the board would have discussed the extension of the contract in conjunction with the performance review in July. But just because of these kind of unique circumstances with the pandemic, the board decided to bifurcate and, and do it over two separate times. So the board did that over a couple of meetings in closed session over the past couple of months. And the board had agreed to extend Dr. Olson's contract. And so we had presented Dr. Olson with a contract extension. And then Dr. Olson had some discussions with myself and with the board attorney regarding compensation levels as they related to other district superintendents. And so the board considered at its last meeting in closed session, a market adjustment to Dr. Olson's salary to be commensurate with similarly situated districts and similarly situated superintendents in this general area in the North Cook area. So the, the employment contract that's going to be up for motion or for, for a motion here in a second and approval by the board. In addition to just the standard extension and Tony, I believe there wasn't any significant changes other than that to the contract. The extension does include a market adjustment of roughly $11,000 to Dr. Olson to bring him in line with other, again, similarly situated superintendents. But that market adjustment is going to be done over a period of two years. So half of it, 50% of it will come this year, 50% of it will come in the following year. So with that, just for the public's sake and for, for everyone else that, that understand what the board had discussed over the past couple of meetings, I'll leave it open for a motion then on this contract renewal.
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge, Niles, Illinois approve the 2020, 23 superintendent's employment contract for Dr. Eric Olson.
Second.
Thanks Rebecca had the motion and Denise had the second. Before I open it up for, for comment right now and for the board, I just want to remind the board members and the public for that matter that we, we do have legal restrictions on what we can discuss at this point with respect to Dr. Olson's specific performance. If someone wants to discuss, I guess, the, the market adjustment, that's not necessarily performance related as long as we don't go into the, to the weeds on specific performance issues. But with that, I'll open it to the board at this point if there's any discussion. Okay. Seeing none, Natasha's, are any discussion from the public that came out of email?
None.
Great. And Dr. Olson, any, anything from the public there?
No.
How about if I turn it over to you, Dr. Olson, anything you want to say in relation to it at this point?
Well, just, you know, if, if the board does vote to approve, I'd be very appreciative. Thank you for your support and, you know, my feeling is there's no other place I'd rather be than District 64. And I'd love to be able to, you know, be here for a very, very long time. So thank you if the board ends up going in that direction.
Thanks. I, I think, I think I speak for the board that we don't want to see you go anywhere else either, so.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, well with that, we'll take a vote.
Yagi.
Yes.
Sotos.
Yes.
Salas, yes, Sanchez.
Yes.
Pearl.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Riles.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries unanimously, Dr. Olson.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to the policy committee update. Carol, I believe that's yours and Rebecca.
Right, so February 23rd, the policy committee met. This was one of those meetings where, you know, it wasn't our usual one. Normally, we discuss the IASB's suggested revisions in, you know, press, these little issues that we get periodically. This time, we discussed policy 4:60, which was about purchases and contracts. Plus all of the related policies, you know, related to hiring professionals and all of that fun stuff. So if anyone wants to go to later on in our packet, we have the draft minutes from February 23rd. So if you wanted to follow along, that would be under, let's see, for the board members, I think that is what, A13? Correct, so A13, just click on the February 23rd minutes and then you could see what we discussed. So the, the main issue was a single or the sole source procurement issue. And Rick, I believe it was you, possibly Tom and Larry also, who talked about trying to mirror the city of Park Ridge's process. So we could do that and we could fit it in within the framework of, you know, the administrative policies for purchases within the district. So, you know, we could, we have the city's code and then we can delete all of the portions that don't apply to the district. I guess I could just screen share what that would look like, so that would be an option. Another option that we discussed was possibly, since this policy 4:60 really involves a lot of other policies and it's kind of a larger undertaking than just slapping together this little thing on 2:40. Another possibility would be to create a special board committee that only investigates the issue of purchases. And yes, they would investigate the administrative procedures and all of, you know, those things that are interrelated and all the special considerations for a school district. So that's another option. Another option we could do is to just discuss this at various meetings and see what the board wants to do. I know one of Dr. Olson's concerns was the board getting involved in administrative procedures and things like that. So those things are kind of intertwined, the policies and then the procedures because they, you know, there are checks and balances. There are certain procedures that say that the administration has to inform the board about certain things and then, then we get to vote. So I don't know what way everyone's moving. City of, or CPS did something similar. They did a whole overhaul of their single source and sole source procurement. But they had an outside company do a whole big report, so it was a larger undertaking. So I mean, yes, we could just stick in the procedures that the city does pretty much. If we wanted to stick to the $25,000 threshold for, you know, having the district either go out to bid or do the informal bidding process, which is kind of what they're doing right now. So we can amend the policy to do that or we can, you know, create a special board committee. Right now, I believe the procedure for creating a special board committee is that the president just chooses. So I guess if we add that to the agenda at, on April 1st, then we could do that. Another option, like I said, is just to discuss this policy at ongoing meetings. I mean, is everyone in, it depends on what everyone says tonight. Are some people in favor of just sticking the city's procedure or something similar into our policy? Or number two, do you want to do a board committee? Or number three, discuss it at further meetings? Or actually, number four, a combination of all of the above or some of the above? So Rick, I know you were the one who, you know, you really wanted it. So this was, I think you're the driving force for this. So we do have a version of, you know, the city, the municipal code with the things that are not applicable to the school district stricken, basically. And we can stick that into the policy. I think we would probably need MJ and Luanne and everyone to look at that before we just do that though. So probably the first reading could be on April 1st or our meeting after that. But then that's after you guys are gone, I believe, right? Because, you know, just because of the timing of it. So what's everyone leaning towards with respect to 4:60? I think Larry, actually, you are also in favor of, you know, tightening up those procedures and making sure we either go through formal or informal bidding process with, with respect to, you know, the single source purchases.
Carol, can I just ask Tony a quick legal question with regard to one of your questions? That's all right. Tony, if, if we were to create a board committee, I know the board's got a vote to create the board committee. I don't think it's, I don't think the, the president sort of unilaterally creates without board action first. I think like if I recall correctly, the president can seat the, the committee members, but not, the board's got to vote majority to create it.
Right, you, you would pick, right, you would pick.
Correct, yeah. Correct. But let's say that happens at the next meeting, does that board committee get dissolved? When the new board gets seated, kind of like Congress, you know, when, if there's any bills pending in Congress, they go away and new, you know, new Congress.
Well, not if it, it would probably, it would dissolve after it finished its charge.
Okay.
Unless the new board came in and just decided affirmatively that they didn't want that committee to continue.
Okay, all right. So it would stay in place effectively again unless the new board said, no, we don't want to go down this path. I just wanted to clear that, that issue up. Well, I guess I'll, I'll start. I don't, when I suggested that we look at the city's new procurement, uh, single source procurement procedures that they put in place. I, I wasn't necessarily suggesting we just adopt them whole cloth. But I was, I, I thought there was some very good things that came out of their long work that they put into that, extensive work that they put into that. That we could adopt some of those specific procedures. And so that's, that was at least just what I was envisioning at the beginning of this and not necessarily just picking it up and, you know, kind of trying to fit a square peg into a round hole and make it work for us. But just picking the good things out of there that we don't have in our policy right now and including them or talking about it and maybe voting to include that. So that was my only thought.
The only idea I had was, and I, I wasn't talking so much about a board committee. But I know the Park District used to do this, to have a, a, a member of the board appointed just to review monthly expenses, you know, we get this long list every month of travel expenses and purchasing books and all of those things. And I just thought, well, you know, I try to review that every month. I, I look at that list. It's, you know, sometimes it's five, 600 items on there. And I thought, well, why don't we just have a board member just review this? And if something jumps out, ask the question before the board meeting, get an answer before the board meeting. You know, and, and just as a.
Thank you.
I think we, I think Larry froze. Either that or he's doing a heck of a good statue job right there. All right, we'll wait for a second till Larry comes back on. But in the meantime, anybody else have any thoughts on this?
I think he's, I think.
Well, Larry, you're back now. You froze for a second there. You're on mute right now.
I said you, you, you guys froze.
Oh, that's right, it was all of us. No, you were, you were going, we just all froze, that's right.
Yeah, you remember the Park District used to appoint a person to overview the monthly expenditures.
Yeah, they still do.
That's where I was trying to drive this train because we all don't read those five or 600 expenditures. You know, I try to look at them every month. I mean, we're spending the taxpayers' money. I think there should be a board member designated, not a committee, just to review these and ask questions prior to the board meeting and get answers if there's something jumps out at them. And then you come in, you do a vote and you'd say, you know, you go to the board committee member, the board member and say, you know, ask a question and, or, you know, and then vote.
Well, Carol, for whatever it's worth, I'm not hearing a lot of jumping up and down that everyone wants to, to revamp the single source policy.
Right, I don't hear that either. Rebecca, you're on the policy committee, what do you think?
I think if we're going to do anything, I think we needed to do the committee. Because I think if we redo it, it should be more overarching into all the things we've talked about. Or at least if we, at least to explore them, even if ultimately all of it doesn't change. So that'd be my vote.
I mean, I think since we're unsure, we could have ongoing discussions and then discuss the creation of a committee at our next meeting or in, in two meetings from now, because I think the next one is the special meeting. So maybe in two meetings, we can discuss possibly the committee having a limited, you know, directive or objective and then seeing where we go from there. Because, yeah, it is, it, there are a lot of moving parts and there are a lot of those administrative procedures. So we'd have to, you know, review those in conjunction with the actual policy. So that's all for that policy. The other main policy that we discussed was our favorite, which was, you know, the pandemic policy. So that is 4:180 pandemic preparedness, management and recovery. So at the prior meeting, we were discussing having the board receive regular updates about the plan, basically, not necessarily amending the whole policy. I believe at the last one, we didn't have one of the people who voted in the majority who wanted to amend the actual substance of it. So it looks like we're just, or some of the board was in favor of amending it to add additional requirements with respect to informing the board. So the IASB press policy already had a sentence that we, basically, we struck that portion when we, you know, created our own D64 tailored policy. So if you look at the February 23rd policy committee meeting minutes, you'll see that sentence that we, that the board might want to add to our current 4:180. And that says that the board would ensure a plan for periodic review of and/or amendments to the plan when needed and/or required by statute, regulation or state guidance. So that was there. We could add that if everybody wants, or we could leave the policy as it is. Dr. Olson, did you have any? Dr. Olson, did you have any thoughts about this?
Well, I was just going to say, going back to the previous piece, thanks, Carol, for how you outlined and and letting, letting, you know, reminding us again. I think my hesitancy is if the board's going to start getting involved in all the procedures. But I think that I could definitely support the idea of taking some time to look at certain ones and delve really deep into them and look at all the procedures and so forth. So I am open to the idea of whether we go board committee, whether it's, you know, somebody like Larry recommended or something. I'm certainly open to that. And then in regard to four colon 180, you know, once again, you know, it's just, I'll do, I'll do what the board wants me to do and, you know, certainly follow that. And I think that we've seen that it has worked out for us that sometimes we've talked about things. And, you know, I'm carrying out what the board would like me to do. But I can also be in support if we want to change language that makes that a little stronger.
Yeah, I feel that what we've been doing has been working periodic updates that, um, in Decrolson's provided and at the board meetings. And so I don't see the need for a change.
Well, everyone knows how I feel about this and it is not an indication of whether I feel that our superintendent and administration have done, you know, they've done a great job with what they've been doing. But I personally feel that the board needs to be more involved and needs to be needs to be doing a little bit more as it as it pertains to some some high level decisions.
Anyone else have comments? I mean, personally, if we were to change it, I'd be in favor of the IASB version. I don't think it ends really pushing tonight for any amendment. So I think we could leave it as is. And then we could also discuss it at our next policy committee meeting, which is to be determined. I don't believe we scheduled that yet. And then we also might have new members too, actually, for our next meeting.
Yeah, so the new board will be voting on potentially new new policy committee members or they will be voting on whether they retain the both of you or or pick two other people.
Okay, so that's all we had for the update. There's nothing to vote on and there's, you know, no first reading of anything. We just wanted to, you know, hash those issues out. So that's all.
Great, thanks, Carol. And Rebecca. All right, we're moving on to the personnel report. Doc, well, why don't we make the motion first and then Dr. Martin, I'm just going to ask you to explain a couple of things in there for the public.
Okay, ready? I'm going, here we go. Don't rescind, but no, already. I I moved that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge Niles, approved the personnel report dated March 11th, 2021, including Resolution Number 1265, Honorable Dismissal of Teachers and Resolution Number 1266, Dismissal of Probationary Educational Support Personnel Employees, noting that the personnel report is based on the recommendation of the superintendent and not upon the board's direct knowledge regarding any of the specific individuals selected for employment.
Thanks, Denise. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Fred's got the second. So Dr. Martin, I was just gonna, we do this every year, but would you, would you be able to explain for the public and for the board to, again, the notion of honorable dismissals and dismissal of probationary education support personnel?
Yes, absolutely. So the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers is where every year we dismiss our part-time staff. And the honorable dismissal means they have done nothing wrong. This is not performance related. This is basically the fact that at this point in the year, we don't know what their FTE for next year will be or or if we'll need some of these positions. So for example, somebody could be a point five kindergarten teacher next year, but right now I don't know if I need a point five kindergarten teacher. So if we don't go through the process of honorably dismissing these individuals, we are guaranteeing them a job at the same FTE for next year. Now, many of these people, their names appear regularly or every year on this list. They go through this process. These are not people that we don't like. They have done nothing wrong. Again, it's simply that we're unsure if we will need them or what that FTE is. But for many of them, our hope is that we can bring them back. They do a great job and they really, many of them like filling these specific roles and it works out well for both the district and ourselves. Many of them will take this experience and move from a part-time position into a full-time position when, you know, that opening comes. So while it's sometimes not the most pleasant situation, it is a yearly process. And again, it's many of these people we hope to bring back if our enrollment starts to go in the direction that we hope it will, which is increasing for the 2122 school year. The ESPs, which are our, or the probationary educational support personnel, these are our first year teacher assistants within the district and it pretty much falls into the same category as what I just said with our part-time staff. At this particular moment, we don't know how many teaching assistants we're going to need for next year because some of the the specific needs that these individuals serve are dictated by not only enrollment by some of the IEPs that are finalized here at the third trimester of the school year. So again, we take the step of basically honorably dismissing these people, letting them know that they didn't do anything wrong. If something turns around, if the need is there, the enrollment goes up or if there are student needs and they've done a good job, we're going to hire these people back. But it's a step we take to make sure that we're not overstaffing for the district.
Great, thanks, Joel, for that explanation as always. Any questions from the board on the personnel report that's in front of us and up on the table for vote? Okay. Then there you, there you are, Natasha. Everybody keeps moving around on my screen. I knew I was looking for you before. Any, any emails, questions from the public?
None whatsoever.
You moved again. And Dr. Olson, anybody in public there?
No.
Okay, then we'll take a roll call vote.
Salas, yes. Pearl.
Yes.
Brials.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Sotos.
Yes.
Biagi.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Dr. Martin. We've got a consent agenda. Before we read the motion, anyone want to peel anything off of this and vote on it separately? Okay, then we'll take a motion on the consent agenda.
I move the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approve the consent agenda for March 11th, 2021, which includes bills, payroll and benefits, approval of financial update for the period ending January 31st, 2021, Resolution 1267 authorizing an amendment of the Intergovernmental Agreement relating to the O'Hare-Noyes Compatibility Commission and audio closed recordings, none.
Thanks, Rebecca. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Fred. Any discussion on any of these issues from the board? Okay, anything from the public, Natasha or Dr. Olson?
No.
Nothing.
Okay, take a vote.
Pearl.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Salas, yes. Biagi.
Yes.
Brials.
Yes.
Sotos.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thanks, Carol. We've got approval of minutes. Who's the lucky one who gets to read this one now?
I move that the Board of Education of Community Consolidated School District 64, Park Ridge Niles, Illinois, approve the minutes from the closed meeting on February 4th, 2021, the committee of the whole meeting on February 4th, 2021, the closed meeting on February 11th, 2021, the regular meeting on February 11th, 2021, the closed meeting on February 25th, 2021, and the special meeting on February 25th, 2021.
Thanks, Fred. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard someone else whisper there, Rebecca. I heard two seconds there, I think.
She's getting some coaching.
Exactly. She wasn't sure if she was going to second that or not. Okay, any discussion from the board on those? Any changes anyone saw that needed to be made to the minutes as presented? Okay, and public comment, Natasha or Dr. Olson?
No.
None.
All right, we'll take a vote.
Sotos.
Present.
Biagi.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Brials.
Rosa.
Pearl.
Yes.
Salas, yes. Motion carries.
Great, thanks. Okay, Dr. Olson, I mean, we've got some discussion items and informational items.
Uh, yes, actually, we've already talked about a couple of them. So the only thing really is that we have our two upcoming meetings. We have our special meeting scheduled for April 1st and our next regular board meeting on April 8th. So although we have a break for a spring break coming up, we have a couple of meetings immediately following to continue our business. So besides that, that's all I have for tonight.
So can I ask Dr. Olson, do we have the meeting where the new board is going to get seated? Do we have that date set yet? Have we figured that out, what it's going to be after the vote is certified and everything?
I'm pretty confident it's April 29th. Okay.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Did you have an issue, Rick? Because didn't you say that you might have to do it sooner or do something?
Well, yeah, no, I might just have to resign from the board. I have to see what the city's going to do in certain terms of where the members there are going to get sworn in. It just may mean that I have to resign my seat here in advance of that meeting. It just depends on the timing. The city's meetings are on Monday nights, our meetings are on Thursday night. So it's possible if the city seats on whatever that would be, April 25th or 6th or whatever, it could mean that I have to resign prior to that. And all it really means is, as everyone knows who's been through the process, that last meeting of this board and the first meeting of the new board is kind of, you know, pomp and circumstance a little bit. There's not any business that takes place for that. Well, there could, I guess, theoretically be a business, right, Tony? You could have a an agenda item that comes up that's important that the existing board has to vote on, but unlikely. And then, you know, then you would, the new board gets sworn in. So it's not a really big deal if that were to happen.
Rick, wouldn't, Rick, wouldn't we be able to invite you back as a, as a ex-board member?
As a guest, yeah.
A metarist as a guest to complete your duties and do the, and do the transition since you are the current seated president and it is your, you know, duty and obligation to hand over to the next board?
Well, I don't, I guess I'd leave that to Tony. I don't know. I I mean, legally, if I get sworn in three nights earlier in the city, I can't. It would be illegal for me to sit as board president or any board member on the 29th. It would just be illegal. You, I could come to the meeting and sit in the audience, but I could not sit in the horseshoe or in this.
Then Tom would be, wouldn't, would he?
Tom would be the board president.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, he'd be the president pro temp. And what, and what, you know, and, and, you know, what typically happens is when the new board gets seated then, I mean, since I won't be carrying over, like, the last time, if I recall correctly, so Dr. Burelli was out. I was the previous vice president, so I sat as president pro temp to do the elections of the new board where I got named president and blah, blah, blah. Otherwise, you could just have either Tom doing that or you could have Tony sit as president pro temp. The board could appoint Tony as a president pro temp for just purposes of electing a new board president. And then after that, new board president runs the show. So.
So Rick, I have a question because the canvassing of the vote is on April 27th, which is that Tuesday. So they're, they're planning to do it on the same day. I'm not sure how they would do that.
Yeah, but they may not be. Because the 20, wait, so the 27th?
April 27th is the canvassing.
So that's a Tuesday. That's a Tuesday, right?
That's a Tuesday, yes.
Yeah, so that means the city's probably going to be the Monday after that. So it'll be, it should be fine.
So we should be fine, yeah.
Yeah, and I think the bigger question is going to be whether we, oh, sorry, Tom.
Since you brought this up, Rick, you shouldn't, I think we should also maybe be discussing at the next meeting seating a new, a new president and a new vice president and a new secretary. When would that happen?
It happens at that meeting on April 29th.
Yeah, that happens at the reorganization meeting after the new board is seated.
Right.
Okay, so that same day?
Yeah.
Or the, or the next meeting?
No, 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 that meeting, that very first meeting. Yep.
Yeah, that meeting.
Yep. So I guess in the other big question that we're going to have to address as a board, I mean, I was gonna, to actually bring it up in new business, but we're kind of there anyway. So I'll say it anyway, is whether we are at a point at which with the kids going back in person, whether this board wants to, you know, make a default as being in person if we even can. I don't know, we haven't talked about it, Tony, legally, whether we can do that, whether we can fit everybody in a room legally or not and whether we want to make that default and the the option is remote instead. So I don't know that we have to decide that tonight, but I'll throw that out there for people to consider and whether or not at least for this April 29th meeting, you want to endeavor to try and do it in person. Be a little odd doing a swearing in of it. I'm sure it's happening all over the place, but it will be a little odd to swear in a new board on Zoom, but is what it is.
If it, if it, if it's something we can do in person, I think, I I personally, for the outgoing and the incoming new members, I think it would be nice to be able to do that for them in person as long as everyone else feels comfortable doing it and if we can socially distance it well enough. I just think it would be, you know, people, new people coming in are dedic, are, you know, committing to four years of of meetings. The people going out had, you know, committed to four years of meetings that they just completed. I just think it would be a nice, you know, a nice thing to do in person as opposed to doing it on Zoom, but that's just my two cents.
Well, why don't we see, I mean, we've got some time. Why don't we see how things go over the next couple of weeks? And maybe, Dr. Olson, you can kind of give us some guidance with Tony as to what we can and can't do, you know, you know, in terms of what whatever rooms we're in and the the number of people that are permitted or not permitted in there. I mean, I know some of us are vaccinated, some of us aren't vaccinated, so kind of just, maybe we can, you know, maybe if all the board members just maybe privately want to, if they want to share with me their comfort level one way or another on doing it just by email, I could, then I can kind of take a straw poll of where everybody is on it and whether we even want to try and push for that. So.
Right, and then we'd have to find out about the new, new members too. I mean, I'm fine with being in person, but I guess, you know, I don't know how the new people will.
I agree. I know, I agree. I think everybody would have to, the, the other new, new newly seated members are going to need to weigh in as well. So, I mean, again, I'm, if everyone wants to stay the way we're going, that's, that's fine too. But again, why don't, just everybody, each board member, just individually, not all together, no, no reply alls for IOMA. But, you know, over the course of the next week or two, just shoot me an email when you have a chance and let me know what you think, just your own personal feeling on whether you want to do it in person or not. And I can, I'll be able to gauge then if we have enough people to even want to do it. So, sound good, Dr. Olson?
It does.
Okay. All right, so you didn't have anything else write on your report?
Correct.
That was it? Okay, so any other new business from the board? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Whoa, there were two of them at the same time. I'll take, I think you got him first, Denise. Tom, you want to take the second?
I'll take the second.
Awesome, thank you. Is there any discussion on adjourning? I'm not going to let the public weigh in on this one, sorry. So we'll take a roll call vote.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Biagi.
Yes.
Sotos.
Yes.
Salas, yes. Pearl. I see her mouthing, yes. Brials.
Yes.
Okay, 8:48 PM, motion carries.
Great, thanks, everybody.